Dean.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Bontrager.
Here.
And Paveglio.
Here.
Did I say everybody's names right? Because I'm going to say them a lot more tonight, so correct me now.
You'll get practice.
All right.
Next one is approval of the agenda. Is it a motion or?
I'll make the motion we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so that was Knight and Alt.
Correct.
Alt?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Paveglio?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
And Bontrager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing is approval of minutes for October 21st, 2021.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Knight?
Yes.
Bontrager?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Alt?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Paveglio?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing.
Well, the first one on the agenda is public comments. I think that's an ability to speak to something that's not on the agenda tonight. So if you're here to, you're here to speak on any of the public hearings, you would withhold those comments now. This first period would just be for people who have, want to address the board about something not on the agenda for the public hearings. So seeing no one, I think we could go on to the public hearings. The first public hearing tonight is a variance application from the Schultz Organization. The applicant representative is Miles Johnson. The business at the site is the McDonald's Restaurant. The zoning for the district is the TS2 District, and the variance they are requesting is a dimensional variance for area of a sign. The Schultz Organization has applied for a variance to the maximum allowed area for a sign, which is 64 feet in this district, to allow a 26-square-feet electronic message board to be added to the existing freestanding sign pole. The existing sign is 106 square feet. The total with the new sign would be 132 square feet, or 68 square feet, more than the maximum area allowed. The existing site is right by M-115 and M-55. It's outlined in the red. To, kind of to the north, you have the Shell Gas Station. To the south, you have Lake Cadillac Resort. And to the west, the Marathon Gas Station, just to give you a sense of what's out there. The front of the building faces M-115. This is a picture of that facade. Has the drive-through windows, and you can see the area of the wall that's available. Surrounding properties, here you have the Shell Gas Station, and you can get a sense of the signage that they currently have. And then on the Lake Cadillac Resort, here is a sign for Cadillac Java, which is a drive-through coffee and other beverage business. It is actually on the same site as Lake Cadillac Resort, which also has its own signage, which I'll be showing you in a minute. And then across the street, you have the Marathon Gas Station as well. The existing sign on the site, this is a photo of that sign, you can get a sense of that size of sign in connection with the development. Other area freestanding signs, you have the Lake Cadillac Resort. Mike had it projected at probably over 200 square feet. They've also added a manual changeable message sign. And then the Burger King identified the main sign at 49 square feet, and the add-on manual changeable message board at 15 square feet. The Shell Gas Station sign has its main logo identification, has some change, or electronic messaging for pricing, and then some sub panels that are there to identify the businesses that are in the location. And same with the Marathon Station as well. To give you some sense of the size, the Shell Station sign is five foot wide between the poles, and the Marathon sign is seven foot between the poles. And then this is another freestanding sign that is for the Lake Cadillac Party Store. If you look at the variance review standards, Section 46-69B2 requires that a practical difficulty or undue hardship be demonstrated. Staff has identified one possible exceptional condition in this case, which would be the other commercial signs already in this business district is identified earlier, some of the signs already exceed the allowed signage.
Mr. Fossis, pasties that we've never addressed, one of them?
Yeah, and so that's one thing that's there. The five standards in Section 46-69B4 must also be met. Staff has determined that these standards have been met, and those have been identified in the staff report. The staff comments on this, an electronic message board. There could be a possibility to mount it on the building wall which faces M-115, although visibility may not be as good as the sign option. The McDonald's sign appears smaller than it actually is due to the open space within the arches. The way we calculate signs is just to take the smallest square that fits around the sign, and we don't subtract any areas that are missing within that square. We just calculate the entire area of the square. The largest pole sign on Lake Cadillac Resort property may be over 200 square feet, and there are also multiple pole signs on the property for Java Coffee, Dockside Restaurant, and the Party Store. Three of the surrounding businesses have electronic message boards, and one has a manual changeable message board, just for comparison of what the adjoining businesses have. With regard to public comments, the public notice was provided in the paper and by direct mail as required by the state statute. And as of completion of this presentation earlier today, we had had no letters submitted to the city regarding this application. And then, of course, when it gets, when the public hearing is closed and the discussion takes place in terms of board action, based on a finding of compliance or noncompliance with the standards of the ordinance, the board shall approve, approve with conditions or deny the variance application. Reasonable conditions may be attached to an approval in order to achieve compliance with the standard of the ordinance. So that is my staff report on the case. And then if the applicant, if we have a representative of the applicant here, you could address the board for a few minutes.
Say your name and address for the record.
Sure, Michael Zacks. My address is 16706 Telegraph Road in Detroit, Michigan. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to present this case. It's fairly simple and straightforward. What we're asking for is actually the smallest LED screen that's available. It's three by six. It's approximately 26 square feet. It adds on to the existing poles, so there's no structural change to the pole or the footing. Just so everyone understands, the McDonald's that's in place is actually one of the smallest modules that they have. They use them all over the country, and most of them are larger. This is one of the smaller ones. We feel that the request is reasonable. We feel that it doesn't violate the spirit of the ordinance. In most municipalities, they have regulations regarding the operation of the screen, content, how long the message can change, so we'd be happy to sign documentation if the city has that available. Do you have any questions for me? I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions? I guess not.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to make comment? Any questions or answer for John?
I'm struggling with practical difficulty. We get to this point on sign issues with great regularity. Some of the signs that you pointed out, Mr. Wallace, were conforming, and others, we don't know necessarily what their history.
Well, but the city did present the ones that were out of conformance also. That makes me mad, like Mr. Fossis. Those have been out of compliance for so long, that wasn't addressed by the city or put in our notes. Why?
Beck?
Well, basically, on this case, this staff report was primarily written by Mr. Coy, and I was largely just working off of his staff report for the presentation. We could certainly gather additional information if that was desired by the board.
Beck, before I joined this ZBA, the ZBA was almost a rubber stamp.
Right.
You walk in and say, "I want," you got it. And that was, you know, that's old enough to be under that regime.
I'm just saying, they don't have a permit to do that. I looked it up. But I'm just saying that, you know, we can't sit here and decide on one business when we're letting somebody else get away with something else. So that's just my concern, so.
Yeah, and it would depend if that, if that business has excessive signage due to the fact that they never pulled permits, and when that would have happened. And the legal ramifications are different depending on the particulars of each case, so we would have to go back and look at how long it's actually been that that signage was there, and if, and if anybody tried to gain an approval for that sign.
Any more questions or comments?
I honestly don't think that their addition to their reader board that's going to go up there is going to be any more complicated to the signage that's already out there, personally. I think it may add to, you know, to helping the business grow, so.
I think, too, if it's on the building, it distracts people further off the roadway. So you're looking further off, and it's a very busy intersection, so I do think it presents much better on the pole sign existing versus on the building, just for traffic safety in that area.
And it sort of represents what's already out there, so it's not distracting from what that side of town is trying to do, so.
We're taking a nonconformity and increasing it, but.
Sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't.
Do I have a motion, or do we?
I mean, I think we also have to be fair, that if we, if we've allowed this with other businesses, that we need to make sure that we're fair to the other existing businesses that have been there for a while. If it was a new building, new business going up, then that would be our chance to say, this is the guidelines. We need to stick with that, but I think they've been there long enough to.
When that sign was put up, we went with, because I was on the board then, we went with what the zoning laws said. That's why the size, they give us the same answer, whether you have a standard-sized sign. You know, I said, "It's small. There's no problem." I mean, I know a place that's got even a smaller sign that's not up on a pole. It's resting, no having problems. You go down to McDonald's at East Lansing. It's on the ground, and it's smaller than the one.
I don't think it's going to be an eyesore, allowing them to do this, so.
Want a motion?
Go ahead.
I move that we okay the variance application to add the second sign to the existing pole sign as described.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Nichols?
No.
Bontrager?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Alt?
Yes.
And Paveglio?
No.
That's four yeses and two nos.
Okay.
It's been approved, so.
Thank you. Next up. Okay, your turn again, John.
Next application is a dimensional variance request at 626 East Chapin Street. The property owner is Christopher Sorenson. Proposed use is for a new home construction. The zoning district is R3, and the variance request is for a side yard variance. A side yard variance of seven feet to the required 20-foot setback from Lester Street right-of-way line is being requested for the principal building. In addition, they would like to have a 6-by-12 covered entryway on the Lester side of the house. The setback to the principal structure would be 13 feet, and the setback to the porch or covered entryway would be seven feet, just to give you an idea. The site plan, which gives those dimensions, is shown in this depiction right here. The site, as you can see right now, is a vacant parcel. I did go back and find the former aerial photo that had the home that was on the parcel, and that, that home, as you can see, either had zero or maybe a one or two-foot setback in the past. This is a photo of the vacant property, and you can see one of the adjacent homes at 624 East Chapin. This is at 702 East Chapin, and the porch is 6.5 feet from the sidewalk. This is 311 Lester Street, and the home is 11.5 feet from the sidewalk. Section 46-69B2 requires that a practical difficulty or undue hardship be demonstrated. Staff feels that there may be an exceptional condition at the site based on the previous development pattern, both on this site and adjoining sites. Neighboring homes on Lester are not set back 20 feet from the Lester Street property line. There are also no sightlines to protect from homes fronting on Lester Street. I think that's important. I think one of the key reasons why the 20-foot setback is in place there is because a lot of times when you turn the corner, you have homes fronting on that side street. And in this case, you don't have that, so you're, it's not as important to protect sightlines up and down, up and down the block. And Section 46-69B4, the five standards in this section must be met. Staff has determined that these standards have been met, and that's identified all in the staff report. Staff comments, the former home on the proposed site almost had no setback from the Lester Street property line. There is a home directly across the street on Lester, as I showed in that picture, at 702 East Chapin, that is also built close to the sidewalk. If the covered entryway is approved, staff would recommend a condition that the porch or entryway not be enclosed as a permanent structure. A temporary windscreen to protect the entryway would be allowed. Survey should also be done to confirm the West property line. It appears that the neighbor's chain-link fence was constructed on the applicant's property. That would also impact the available width of this lot, which is already somewhat, somewhat narrow. With regard to public comments, the public notice is required by the statute to be in the paper and by direct mail was done. As of the preparation of this presentation, no letters have been submitted to the city regarding this application. And again, as with the previous case, based on a finding of compliance or noncompliance with the standards of the ordinance, the board shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the variance application. Reasonable conditions may be attached to an approval in order to achieve compliance with the standard of the ordinance. If the representative from the, for this application is available, you could make a presentation.
We really have nothing more to add than what you said. It's just a matter of being able to put a 24-foot-wide structure in the center.
State your name and address before you start, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Christopher Sorenson. My address is 11311 LaSalle Road, Manistee, Michigan. That, that's really it. Everything else has been presented. That's just, the intent is to be able to put a 24-foot-wide structure without intruding on the neighbor's property that's already there. Otherwise, we could, you know, to be in total compliance with the ordinance as it's written, we could put a 22-foot-wide structure, but we would be way back from Lester Street and kind of intrusive on the neighbor's property. So that's, that's basically the reason for the variance, or the request for the variance. Thank you.
Any questions, or?
So you could.
Yeah, I'm Chris, Christopher.
Yes, Chris. You could get by with a two-foot variance and still build the plot that, the footprint that you're looking at. Is that correct?
No, I don't think I understand the question.
You need to have
It's a.
Seven feet on one side.
Correct.
And 20 feet on the other side is what the ordinance is calling for.
Correct.
That's a total of 27, which leaves 23.
23 feet, actually. Yeah, not 22, 23. Correct.
Yep.
Correct. Your math is correct, yes. Yeah, so what I'm asking for is to split the difference and make it equal 13 and 13 to be able to put a 24-foot, a modest-sized home within the center of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion.
Well, you need to open the public hearing.
Sorry?
Public hearing.
The public hearing.
Any other, anybody else wants to speak on behalf of you? Okay, we'll close the public hearing now. Discussions or comment?
Yes, my one concern with being 13 feet from the sidewalk is, I measured one of my cars tonight. It's 14 feet long. So if I were to pull up directly to the garage and touch the garage, I'd be a foot onto the sidewalk. I know there's an elementary school there, and I'm assuming kids might walk home and whatnot. So I'm just worried that, you know, you get a truck that's 20-foot long and the sidewalk's completely blocked. Those kids may walk out in the street, or anybody walking, quite frankly, will have to divert around in the street. So I'm curious if the orientation of the garage entry could change, like the other homes, to be from the backside so that vehicles don't obstruct the sidewalk.
That is definitely a concern that I looked at myself. One option that I've looked at is to have the house at that point and back up the garage to allow, the intent, and the garage has drawn, and there is a 24-by-24 garage, two-car garage. So the intent would be that the car would park inside the garage. And I did, you know, have thoughts about somebody pulling up and parking there and being over the sidewalk. And I totally agree, there is an elementary school right up the street.
Chris, can you go up to the microphone, please, so we can hear you on the recording?
So the audience can hear you.
Not that loud. So, so that, you know, there is an option of doing that as well.
Thank you.
We have a motion. We're in for discussion.
I think we were to motion to approve it, we should consider changing the orientation. I said, people will be walking through there, somebody comes visits with a truck or something, and it's going to block the sidewalk. There are other noncompliances. The 311 Lester Street home, I think, measured 19 feet from the sidewalk when I looked at it on the aerial photos. So that would allow for a vehicle to mostly be in the driveway and not block that walking path.
I think we should, I think we should look at is to make sure that porch doesn't get covered.
But also, you can make that a stipulation in the motion. Yes, you can make a stipulation.
Do we have, well, you two want to read it back so they know we're, they're second, and they're.
So are we making a motion with a stipulation, or are we not making a motion?
Yeah, up the side porch not being covered, and then allowing enough footage for the vehicle not to be on the sidewalk.
Are you going to specify how much footage, or?
You did the math.
Sure, so I'll try to motion this. Help me out if I'm wrong. So I motion to approve the setback request. With the exception of the porch, it needs to remain uncovered, as called out in the city's recommendations. And then, one of two things, either the garage needs to move back to allow that 20-foot parking so cars don't block the road, or change the orientation of the garage doors on that 24-by-24 garage so you enter from the south side, as to not obstruct the sidewalk.
Wow.
That's why we have a recording. I'll type that all out later.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Bontrager?
Yes.
Paveglio?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Alt?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
And Dean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been approved, so next step is go see where the, get the building permits.
Yes, sir, thank you. Did you, if I can ask, did you say 19 feet for the garage or 20?
I suggest, I suggested 20. 311 Lester, again, I'm measuring on an application with the GAS. I got 19 feet.
Okay.
But I recommended 20 in the motion.
Okay, so is that where we're at, is 20?
Unless they want to make an alternative motion to change it.
I just asked, because of, because of 24-foot wide.
Walk up to the microphone, please, so it's recorded. Thank you.
A 24, 24-foot wide, if I set it back, if we get the 13 for the house, and I set it back six feet, which is kind of a, that gives us 19 feet, and that doesn't encroach too much on the neighbor, and still gives enough, depending on the vehicle, I agree. I'm, a truck that I own probably pushes 20 feet. I did measure a couple vehicles, like the vehicle I'm driving tonight, is about 17 feet. So it does depend on the vehicle as well.
I'd say if it's 19 for all the sidewalk, it'd be more than enough. You just.
Well, he recommended 20, right?
Yeah, I recommended 20, but can we motion the?
Adjust it.
Yeah, you can, you can make a new motion to amend the previous motion on the, to go from 20 to 19 feet.
Do we have to look at it as whatever the largest vehicle that might be there? I mean.
Well, like you said, my, my truck would stick out, that would stick out a little bit, but it's not blocking the sidewalk. That's the big thing. The only time that come a big, big-time problem is they park there, they've got the garage full, and they got parked there, and then here comes a snowplow, sidewalk plow. But that, that's their problem, you know.
So I guess I'll motion to amend that to 19 feet.
I may need a support.
I'll support.
Same motion, support.
Okay. All right. Bontrager?
Yes.
Paveglio?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Alt?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
And Dean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have our third and last public hearing now. This one is a dimensional variance request at property at 114 Shore Lane. The property owner is Jean Lynn. The applicant is Randall Myers. The property address is 114 Shore Lane. The proposed use, it's for a new home construction. The zoning district in this case is R1, and the variance request is a dimensional variance to the required front yard setback. The applicant is seeking a 20-foot variance to the required minimum front yard setback of 30 feet, 35 feet. This map shows an aerial photo of the area, and the proposed site is outlined in the red. And you can see that it's on a cul-de-sac that does not have a lot of traffic on that site. As you'll see later in the report, there are a number of homes that are either on undersized lots per the district or do not meet front yard setbacks, but I'll go through that now. This is one of the proposed illustrations of what the development would look like, just a partial showing of the structure. This is a foundation drawing, which shows the intent of how the foundation would be put in for the building. This illustration is the floor plan, it shows the living area, the residence portion of the structure. It includes a kitchen, living room, bedroom, and restroom facility in the living quarters. The layout would be with a 10-foot setback on the west property line, and it actually becomes a 35-foot setback from the rear property line, which is to the north side of the property. What's probably not being approved as part of this variance, I think he's showing two curb cuts in this, I think that would be a separate, separate issue. But that would have to be taken up probably through city engineering as to whether a second drive would permit, be permitted. Normally, it's just one curb cut per single-family lot. And this was another illustration, a little more comprehensive look of what the shape of the building would look like. And there's a side elevation for the structure. The proposed site is fairly heavily wooded along the north property line and the west property line, as you can see in this photo. The building portion of the site that would be built upon would be mostly in that clearing area. There might be a need to remove at least one significant tree, which is probably the one on the right side of the photo on the left. But for the most part, much of the vegetation on the site would be retained. These are the area, pictures of the area homes in the immediate area, these two are on the cul-de-sac. You can see that there are no sidewalks in the area. So the setbacks tend to look exaggerated, because, you know, if you had a tree lawn and then you had a sidewalk, you would, the sidewalks, I mean, the setbacks would look much closer, but they look enlarged just because the sidewalk and curb lawn area is all in grass. Those are additional homes still on the cul-de-sac at the very end. Looks like there's a driveway to a home set, set pretty far back in that case, where the dead-end sign is. The picture on the left here is the home to the west of the site. It actually has two driveways to the lot, entering off the cul-de-sac and entering off the street to the north. It has one large, you know, accessory building, and then also a large attached garage with the primary living unit. The picture on the left is to the immediate east of the proposed site. And these, these setbacks are on the homes to the block immediately to the north of the cul-de-sac street, but just to give you some idea of the character of the neighborhood. And again, no sidewalks in this area. This is actually another photo from the opposite side of the cul-de-sac, of the one that was immediately west of the proposed site. You can see the large garage that's attached to the home, and then the other detached accessory building, which is off the cul-de-sac, is shown to the rear of the property. Again, Section 4669B2 requires that a practical difficulty or undue hardship be demonstrated. Staff feels there is an exceptional condition based on the proposed lot's odd configuration and the existence of several nearby properties which do not meet the zoning ordinance. Section 46-69B4, the five standards in this section must be met. Staff has determined that these standards have been met, see staff report. Although the standard in regard to whether the proposed variance will diminish property values is dependent on the design and materials of the proposed structure, this will be a board determination. I think this was one standard that, I think it all depends on the final design and materials as to whether, you know, if you build it to look like an industrial garage, it could diminish properties, but if it's much more residential in character, I think it would not harm property values in the area. So, but that, I think that's going to be a board determination. Public comments. Public notice was provided in the paper and by direct mail as required by state statute. As of the preparation of this presentation, several letters have been submitted to the city regarding this application. Most have been sent to the board through email, and the remainder in front of you in hard copy. I think most of you have reviewed those letters prior to the, to the start of the meeting. If you haven't had a chance to look at those, I would suggest reading through those before any actual vote on the application. Staff comments. The ratio of home space to garage space is considerably lower in this proposed home than we typically see. However, our ordinance does not have a cap on allowable attached garage space to a single-family home. Five other homes in the immediate area do not meet the required minimum lot size, which I believe is 12,000. The lot size in this case is 8,000. The average front yard setback for the five homes that are closest to the proposed site is 17 feet. So this, that average setback is not much different than what is being proposed in this variance request. And as I mentioned, there's a heavy vegetation along the north and west property lines of the proposed lot, which will limit views to this structure. The area of the proposed home and the attached garage is largely cleared of any trees or vegetation, very little clearing would be needed to construct this home. As I also mentioned, the lack of sidewalks in the neighborhood give the impression that all homes have a greater setback than they actually do. As some level of development should be approved for this site, this application provides a good opportunity to set what the board sees as an appropriate maximum development potential for this site. Because it is an independent lot, to not allow any development essentially would constitute a taking of the property, which we could not do. So this does give the board a chance to weigh in on what kind of a maximum development potential could be for this site. If there is concern over the size of the garage space, it may be appropriate to include a condition to any approval that addresses this subject. For instance, you might want to suggest that there be no commercial renting of any space in that garage, or something of that nature, but that would be something to consider. And again, on the board action, you can approve, approve with conditions, or deny the variance application. Reasonable conditions may be attached to the approval in order to achieve compliance with the standard of the ordinance. And that concludes my review, and if the applicant would like to address the board for anything you think you want to emphasize, or thinks I may have missed in my presentation, now would be the time to do that.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm Randall Myers, 108 Shore Lane. I think you have most of the information, and John's done a pretty thorough job of describing what, what we're doing. I would add to it some of my intent, and actually some personal follow-up that I had with one of the neighbors after talking to John. The lot, the staff has asked that I bring to you the Board of Appeal because of the unusual size and shape of the lot. My goal is to provide small living quarters and storage, both as a bunkhouse, living area, if you will, for all the grandkids and the kids that come to visit, my family, and to store boats and vintage cars and those other things that you seem to, we enjoy. In the process, talking with Jean Lynn, she offered it for, for sale, I said, "Well, let's see what we can do." The layout of the building is, was designed to be as least offensive and most cosmetically acceptable in the neighborhood as possible. It's placed to the west, adjacent to the setbacks and to the back, allowing minimal setbacks in those directions to get it away from the front, the diagonal portion of the building. Our intent would be to use a stick structure, vinyl siding studded, and make it look as much like a home as possible, so it's not a commercial building, and use that. In the past, I had asked for approval for additional parking space in front of our house, and I do know that parking space in front of a garage is very important. So the design of the building is a little bit of an L shape on purpose, so that we're using the longest section of the building for the garage door and for accessibility, leaving the side of the building along the diagonal part of the lot. The, in laying all this out, John came by to take pictures and, and prepare for this, and told me that he had spoken to one of the property owners, and they had some concerns about the exterior of the building, the appearance of it. And so we submitted additional drawings showing the vinyl siding, the shingled roof, and a, what should I say, earth tone color, which I don't know how you do that in Michigan, if you can make it turn from white to green to whatever, but I'm assuming it'd be green or brown, something that's going to blend in and disappear as much as possible. And I happened to talk to an individual, one of the neighbors socially, who said I was the one that went in and looked at it, and we talked a little bit about it, and his concern was he didn't want a pole barn, which I said that wasn't our intent. So we tried to address the exterior facade, so. Living quarters for kids and relatives and parent, and grandkids, and storage for all of our toys is our primary purpose. Have no intent in renting out space, because the day after it's, would be built, I could pretty well fill it with grandkids in classic cars and boats. I've got enough to fill it, so I have no, no reason to do anything but use it myself. Questions that I can answer?
I think one of the correspondents was regarding the bathroom. Is there a shower in this bathroom, or?
Yes.
That small square alongside the sink?
Yep, yep. Bathroom, shower, kitchen area, one bathroom, bedroom and living space. Stairway along the side closest to us, which, which makes it easier for us to utilize.
Any more? Any other questions?
Thank you for-
Any other comments?
This is the-
If we've submitted a letter, can we still-
Yeah, you can still speak if you submitted a letter.
Discuss at your name and address.
And then fill that out when you're done.
Okay.
Everybody that speaks needs to write their name and stuff down for me, please.
Now you're multitasking me.
You can wait until you're done.
My name is Brad Marine. I'm actually the executor for the Mary Gate Marine Trust, whose address is 1308 Forest Lane. It's one of the houses in the pictures. First of all, I've known the Linds as, I mean, they're family. And Doc Myers has done a great job, when my mom was sick, driving by, taking care of her. So I have the utmost respect for both, both of these families. My concern, and I, and I'm listening to Doc talk about his toys and wanting to store it in there. As you can see in my letter, this isn't about an R1 single-family dwelling, this is about a garage. This is about a storage building in an R1 zone district, right across from City Park, which wasn't mentioned. I think, I mean, I would like to have a toy box by the lake as well. I had to build one in, out south of town, that's where I put mine. So as much as I respect and understand and appreciate what he wants to do, it does not fit the zone requirements of a single-family dwelling. I mean, 2,300 square feet for storage, 700 square feet for living. You know, he's made it clear what he wants to use it for. My question, and my concern, is that if we allow that, what's to say? That the next vacant piece of property, somebody wants to put a big storage building in, put in a 700-square-foot living quarters, and call it a single-family dwelling? So therein lies my concern, you know, in looking at your language of the ordinances, it seems to me, is this is a garage, it's a storage building, and if he wanted to submit something that met those criteria, single level, for instance, maybe a smaller footprint, for instance. I think, I can't speak for the neighborhood, but I would think the neighbors would be somewhat receptive to that. I would be. So as it stands right now, I don't support it. I don't think it fits with the R1. Can you imagine putting a, a storage building on Holly Road? Yeah, I mean, you would get lots of feedback. So I appreciate your time, and again, Linds, I love you, Doc, appreciate it, and I'll put my name on here before I get in trouble.
Any other comments? Just state your name and address.
I'm Brian Arons, I'm at 211 Lake Drive, my house is also in the, in the pictures. And I haven't studied it quite to the extent that Brad has, and again, I respect my neighbors, I, you know, I'm all for development, things like that. So my primary interest today is to see how the board rules, where some of this goes. I've got a nice two-car attached garage, and quite frankly, I'd love to add some space onto it. So if we're going to loosen up some of these rules, and there's a little bit, there's a lot of, let's say, liberties that can be taken with some of these things, I'm kind of interested to see how that works out, because I may come and pay you a visit and ask for a, a couple of deviations myself. So, again, I, I think the doctor, good doctor, has done a good job explaining what he wants to do with it, and I agree with Brad, it's really about the garage, which is awesome, maybe he'll let me borrow some space someday, but it's less about a single-family home. So I'm really curious to see how you folks rule on this and see where it goes, because it might have some consequences on what I want to do myself. So that's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
Sorry, I won't.
Sorry, Walter.
Just need to state your name and address.
Walter Hutchinson, 106 Shore Lane. And I live right next door to Randy. I know what he wants and why he wants it, understand that. And my daughter's Kelly Hutchinson. She owns the two-plus acres right to the west of it. And she said that if she doesn't like the idea of a big garage like that, and she can, on that two acres, she can build the same thing, only a whole lot bigger than that, without having any problems with setbacks. If she puts in a 60 by a 200-foot building there with a 700-foot living quarters into it, that somebody can turn into an office, she can have two or three of those on the property. And this same thing was here. The Linds was here at the Zoning Board of Appeals a few years ago for the same piece of property, only a smaller building, and that was denied by this board. And DEQ said that that was a wetland and couldn't be built upon. So... And there were some questions about the setbacks in the rear too, whether they're as big as what it says. So that's what I got to say, speaking on behalf of my daughter.
Anybody else? Okay, just, meeting's closed. Any comments or proposals or...
So do you have some questions on it, on the property's dimensions? I know in one of the letters we received, it talks about the alleyway or alleyways that used to be behind this property being split between different owners. I think the drawing that we have from the city discludes that alleyway, or maybe I'm just not seeing it right. The red drawing should be, is it all the way up to that top line, we'll say? I don't know what page it is, but it's the red one.
So if you're interested, I have the original plat drawing.
Okay.
What the alleyways are, if you'd like to see it.
And then the alleyways were...
There's your alleyway.
Yep. But it's like...
Alleyway runs north-south.
Yep.
And then it also ran east-west.
Right.
Through there and runs all the way down to the lake, actually.
So I think in one of the letters it mentioned that alleyways were split between owners to give that property back to owners in the area. So is this proposed red square actually, or the triangle further north on the north line than what we see here? Or, because I know in the drawing of the pole, of the building, you can see the alleyway cut out and then it jogs up if you go to the hand drawing, John?
Yeah, this is what showed on the GIS. I could research the, supposedly the rights-of-way were vacated. So I, whether they all went, if they were all on one property, then they wouldn't necessarily have to be divided between two properties. So I would have to investigate whether the right-of-way was entirely on the one property. If it was and it was vacated, it would remain probably entirely within this lot. That would be the question. I guess I would have to do more research on that. But this is what was showing on our GIS map.
The map shows it like it's all on one property.
The red map?
Yeah, that one there.
If you were closing, say, an alley right-of-way that people were budding on both sides, that probably would be split. But I could certainly confirm what the status of those vacations are.
Yeah, I'm curious on the vacations, because I think we have to understand what's a reasonable exceptional size, right, for a building? So knowing the actual property lines, I think will help the board understand what could be built and then what the variance is going after, if the building can be shifted north or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if it's the way I have it drawn, he's shifted the building as far north as he can. I'm showing, trying to honor a 35-foot setback to the north line and a 10-foot to the west line. So he couldn't go any further west or north. I guess the real question is if there is some discrepancy on who owns the vacated property, would that make the setback on the north line even smaller? Which, you know, that could be possible if that's the case, but I haven't seen any evidence of it. But that's not to say if I do further research on it, I might not find something else. But right now, I'm not seeing any sign of it.
When you drew up these drawings, did you assume the alleyway in that back line there?
Talking with the Linds, it had been vacated and it was part of their property.
Part of that property. Gotcha.
So that's what I worked off was.
Okay. So in your drawings, it wouldn't be any further north, but in the city's drawing it might.
Well, the aerials I got from the city and drew off of that.
Okay.
At the same.
Gotcha.
I'm curious how we ended up with such a small parcel.
That's a very good question.
It's part of the original plat.
And, well, it could be part of the original plat. And then we changed zoning ordinances along the way, but maybe some other things happened. The reason I'm asking is I'm curious about a self-created problem. And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be for Mr. Myers. It would be for the Linds, who are the property owners.
Well, if this lot were owned by somebody else who owned an adjoining lot, it couldn't have been split off without conforming with the then ordinance, which would have made it then a legal, it would have been a legal lot. And then if we passed an additional ordinance that made it non-conforming, it would still have development rights, so...
I understand that, but I'm curious what the history is. I think that that's important to this, and it ties in to what Ben is getting to.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the history. That would take some research to see what the historical ownership patterns were involved in this area.
I do have the original plat, yeah.
Jack Marie, do you guys have any information?
Yeah, it was my degree on the original plat.
Jack, come up, Jack. Come to the microphone. Sorry.
I'll give you the best of my knowledge. I'm Jack Lynn, and I live at 1613 Sunnyside Drive in Cadillac. As far as I know, I'm speaking for my mom as much as anything, the lot was in the original plat, as Brad has suggested, and I believe it's Lot 83. And during a lot of timeframe, my dad, back in the 70s and 80s, along with the original owners before Walt bought his area and the condos to the west owned all that, they vacated Forest Lane and then that alley down there. And I believe Rick Blackmer got the north side of Forest Lawn, and my dad and mom got the south side. And on the alley side, when it was vacated, I believe the condo association gave my dad and mom their side of that alley. So you've got the width of the alley. It belongs to my mom and dad, attached to Lot 83, which was platted originally, not subdivided out. It was in the original plat. And then you have half of Forest Lawn on the north side. So it's been extended, Lot 83, which as you can see is a very strange parcel. So it's been extended on the north side by the vacation of Forest Lawn, and on the west side by the vacation of the alley, the full width of the alley, which I believe was 20 feet. I don't, it's in the property description. If you actually don't look at the aerials and you actually read the property descriptions, you'd see what's been added on to Lot 83. So take a look at the property description, and you'll see that it starts out as Lot 83, and then it's added on to as these areas were vacated. So the lot's actually gotten bigger. It hasn't gotten smaller. And it's not been subdivided or sold or given to anyone else. It was a lot back in, whenever the plat was decided, it was Lot 83, and it's been that way all along. Does that answer some of the questions on the dimensions? And that's the history as I know it.
Thank you, Jeff.
There should be something at the courthouse showing that they...
Oh, it's in the, yeah, the vacation, I believe if you read the property description, it starts with Lot 83, and then it goes on to talk about an additional amount on one side. And because I've read over it over the years, and it adds in, and it actually ends up looking like that. That's where the aerial diagrams came from, is from the property description.
Well, that, what's on the screen, looks like it would be if Forrest went straight west. That looks like that already accounts for half of that right-of-way.
Yeah, it does. And the other half, I believe, went to the north side, which is Rick Blackmer's property. So he would have gotten the north side of that. And when the alley was, as I say, when the alley was vacated, my parents got their, the east side of it, and then it was signed over. And I think, again, that's written in the property description. You'll see that if you add all that up, you get that, the outer triangle, not just the inner triangle. Does that help with the history as best as I know? Okay.
Any more comments or questions? Is that, how about, what? Sorry. How about a motion?
So this is not going to be a residence. It's going to be a storage unit. With a house facade.
Well, there would be a living quarters, there would be a full living quarters in there.
And nobody's going to live there.
Well...
There's going to be visitation. I mean, you know, they're going to visit, but they're not going to live there.
You know, a little history. Mr. Hutchinson came here, how many years ago, looked to build a pole barn, where his daughter lives now, pretty good size though, and was denied then.
Look at green acres. They have limited time that they have to do something with that garage, because the house is gone.
Yeah, sunny side.
Yes.
You can build accessory structures up 65% of the house's foundational square footage, right? So the 2.2-acre lot has an accessory building, but all accessory buildings have to add up 65% of the home's size. Maybe there's opportunity there, but you can't, unless you parcel it, you can't put multiple residences on an R1 lot, so...
I think we have to be cautious of setting a precedent of storage buildings as such. You know, if we okay this, which we may, but I think there's going to be other variances come on board. What are we going to do with that?
Well, and it raises the question whether we need anything to cap garage space with single-family homes. Right now, we don't. Literally anybody in the city who has a home could build a 10-car garage and attach it to their home. Not saying people would jump at the chance to do that, but if they had the space, they obviously could. And maybe we do need to add something in the future to the ordinance if that's a concern. But I think right now, we've got to look at what the legal abilities are right now with the lot, if he's establishing a residence. Because right now, we don't know, you know, people can own homes now and be there relatively short periods of time, and they stay empty most of the time.
Right. I think it's difficult to decide what's reasonable, right? I mean, if you look at an R2 home on page 35 out of 47 of the zoning book, an R2 lot is 9,000 square feet, so probably similar to this, and they have a 25-foot setback. There's a couple of homes that don't meet the size today, and they don't meet the setback. So it's, right, I think some were 15-foot, 34-foot, 1-foot. So it's just what's reasonable, right? I mean, this, so this building's 2,430 square feet out of the 8,100 square feet. So it's right at the max of 30% of the lot area covered by all buildings. On smaller lots like the 5,000-square-foot lot, I think I got the home at around 1,000 square feet. So we're at 16%, 17% of size. So like, do we look at it from that standpoint? Is, if you said 16% of 8,000, that puts you at like 1,400 square feet. That gets you a 36 by 36 building, so it's smaller than this. But it kind of meets the surrounding home's size per lot. It seems reasonable for where it's at. It probably would meet the 25-foot front yard setback for an R2 home, which the lot should be 9,000 square feet. So it's kind of more in line there. Does that define reasonable for a variance? You know, question for the board.
And the five homes closest to this lot, they average 17-foot setback. So it is a kind of predominant on the cul-de-sac.
And I know the home just missed two, if I did the measuring right, the last other section that talks about setbacks and general exceptions, where if you find two homes within 100 feet of the property line to the subject parcel, you can average those homes for the setback. But that was my question around where the alleyway is. If it extended further, you get the home to the immediate north and the home to the northeast and average those setbacks. I think it was 22 and a half feet, and I looked at it on GIS stuff. So again, it wouldn't meet the 15-foot setback requested here, but if you did a 36 by 36 structure, which is smaller, but still reasonable for putting a living space above it, it'd fit the neighborhood's kind of size and setbacks existing. Probably want to put in something about how it looks or whatnot.
What did you say in terms of what you thought was a reasonable setback?
So I mean, an R2 residential is a 9,000-square-foot lot, so we're just under that. But their front yard setback is 25 feet for an R2 residential. And it's more than the average of the five homes around there.
I can't do a motion or anything, so...
Well, I'm going to go for it, so I'll make the motion we grant, accept the variance as stated in Sunny City.
This is our second?
So do we make exceptions in the motion?
I think you should consider exceptions. The city states that it be taking of the property if we don't allow building on the site. So... Question, can we ask the public for thoughts or no? Question, can we ask the public for thoughts, or no?
It's closed.
Well, you, you, the motion failed for lack of support, so the proper thing would be consideration of another motion.
So do we offer a motion with contingencies or?
Yeah, I almost need time to write them out, but.
She's recording it, so if you just put your thoughts out there, she can-
She can piece them together.
We can't, we can't ask for public opinion, because I know these neighbors have.
Right.
We can't, okay.
Nick, if you open it back up.
No, the public hearing's closed.
We'll open back up the public comments. If you want to comment, come on up to the mic.
Again, Brian Aaron's 211 Lake Drive.
Just on the mic first.
Brian Aaron, Aaron's 211 Lake Drive, I guess the question is, there's been a lot of talk about the setbacks, but is it a, does it meet the bill as a single-family residency? That someday could be sold in and of itself and occupied by a single family with 700 square foot and 2,400 square feet of garage? I guess that's my question. If the answer's yes, then that's, that's my answer. If the answer's no, that seems to be more important than maybe the setbacks, but that's my question. Thank you.
And we're closed again. Any more comments or a motion or questions?
Let's see, so if I need more information, do we need to? I don't know, we need more?
You look like you're ready to say something.
Yeah.
I move that we deny the request for variance.
I will second.
Okay.
Okay, alt? I'm saying yes to deny it. To deny, yes. Nichols?
Yes.
Dean?
No.
Vaglio? Are you?
Yes.
Knight?
No.
And Bontrager?
Yes.
Okay, that's four yeses to deny and two noes not to deny it.
Sorry.
Are there any, can I ask questions at this point, or is it?
I guess I can, after I may ask questions?
Well, if, if your thought is, you know, can you bring back another proposal? It has to be, you know, somewhat different than the proposal that was just passed, so you can't bring back the same proposal. But I think you could file for another variance if it was a, you know, had, had significant differences, more than like, you know, chop a foot off here or there. You could bring back another proposal.
But the R1 regulations is a minimum of 600 square feet of living space.
Excuse me, has it been opened to public for discussion?
No, pub, public comments closed. You know, it's, it's up to the board if they want to respond to what they might consider in a future request.
Kate, Mark, why are you shooting?
I'm sorry. I think that's something that he can go back to John with and ask with, in private, what, what he needs to do if he wants to resubmit a new.
Yeah, we'll request.
Yeah. It's not up to the board, I don't think.
Well, I, I don't have a good sense from what, what, how the motion was made, what the main issue is. So I think that would have to come from the board.
If I were to resubmit, what do we not, what do we not achieve? You know, we're trying to follow the regs that are in place for R1. Is public comment, is design, is intent? What, what is it that, that makes this not acceptable variance of this?
Right.
I think personally, it's fact, it's not a residence. It's not somebody's going to be moving and living in it. They're using it as a cottage, basically, the best word I can come up with.
Doesn't that what people do when they come up here for three months?
Yeah, my neighbor was, we cut the letter from, oh, 112 is here about three weekends a year.
Yeah, well, I know, that happens, but I mean.
Well, we could also-
It was tentative right off the bat, it's, you know.
We could also seek a legal opinion on whether it's a residence. It's neat, it's not clear to me how it's different than what a lot of other people are doing in town. People buy homes and then they try to set it up as Airbnb and, and a lot of different situations.
I think that, I think it's clear, because he was very clear in his description of what he wanted to use it for, and that is storage. So.
Public, public comment, public comment is shut off right now.
I thought we were open to public.
No, no.
Mr. Myers, you can talk to that, I think. This question, I'm just asking.
I believe because he's the-
We, we need to determine if, what he needs to do if he wants to bring something back, and that doesn't require the public's input. It's a board decision, and it just, the board needs to give some direction. Why did they deny it? I mean, he wants to know what can be done, because as I mentioned in my report, this was a perfect opportunity for the board to set the standard for what happens on the site, and, and you passed on that opportunity, and that's unfortunate. But now it would be a perfect time to say what has to happen to get more favorable response from the board. Because this lot is not going to go away, and should, we shouldn't have to hear six applications for developing this lot.
So, so what I would think would be more reasonable for this application would be to look at the surrounding properties and the, the amount of coverage the building is per property size. So for example, the lot that's 5,660 square feet, furthest to the east, up in the corner here, has about a 1,100-square-foot home, so that puts you at 17%. So I would, you know, consider looking at other properties and looking at the dwelling's size for the property and trying to match that. And I think, you know, if you, if you find yourself in that 16 to 18%, you know, I would definitely consider, you know, looking at a setback to allow it to happen, it fits the aesthetics, and, you know, something that fits the aesthetics of the, um, the surrounding building. So as you mentioned, like vinyl siding, no commercial roll-up doors, adequate windows to make it look like a home potentially, you know, because the neighbors don't want a, a storage building look. They want to, you know, maintain the value and the, the look of the, the neighborhood, so.
You have a comment for me?
Is this something that the board maybe can put together, something in writing later and present it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you have that opportunity.
So we're not on the spot, trying to put something together?
Yeah, I think so. I, I-
Something more, that's more, yeah.
Yeah.
Thought through versus being on, put on the spot?
Because I think eventually somebody, otherwise we're just going to keep concurring application after application.
Any, any more comments or questions or whatever? Sorry, we didn't get past, you're more than welcome to try again. Okay, if you want. There's no tabled items, and here we go, public comments, again.
Yeah, if you want to make a public comment, you could make a comment at this point.
Public comments are back open.
Brad Marine, Executive 1301 Forest Lane, I thank you. I think you understand our concern as neighbors. We're not opposed to him putting the building, and I think Board Member Dean was trying to get there. And, and I think you, that's exactly what people want to see. We don't want to see a storage building there. It's a beautiful spot. It is interesting, you said make it look like a house or dwelling. Well, it should be a dwelling. And again, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
I guess we adjourn for the night.
Well, before we adjourn, I just want to say this, I'm resigning from the board, this will be my last meeting. My home is currently for sale, and we will, we're moving August 15th to Tucson, Arizona. So it will no longer be a residence of Cadillac, so. It's been a pleasure working with everyone. This, this has been a-
Pleasure happening.
This has been tough. I still have family here in town, so I'm, I'm struggling with this move, so, but.
You'll be missed.
So I know Bob's been a intricate part of the community also, so we're, yeah, we're going to miss everyone, so, but this will be my last meeting, so.
Well, we thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Well, like I, you know, Hutchinson, I don't know how many years ago it was, they came in, he wanted to build a big pole barn.
Are we adjourned? Sorry, are we adjourned?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we're adjourned.
Because if we have a quorum and we keep moving, then we can't be adjourned. So if we're going to continue as a quorum to talk, then it has to stay.